Thank you, Father, for this day and the many, many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. I ask you to guide us, please, as our country works through all of the issues related to our election process. And I thank you for our election process. I pray for Israel, and I ask that you lead us, guide us, and direct us this morning as we consider the business of Jackson County. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And that brings us to amendments to the agenda. Mr. Cumst?
I don't have any.
Morris?
I don't have any.
Mr. Taylor?
No, sir.
I don't have any. Mr. Bossarge?
None.
Chancery clerk?
None.
Administrator?
None.
Road manager?
None.
Board attorney?
Just a question. Were the Tracy, I don't know if she's here, were these amended values already included on the agenda? Okay.
Yeah, those were added.
Okay. None.
All right. Any other amendments to the agenda? Well, that's good.
Yeah.
I think inventory has one. Yeah, what Jimmy just mentioned.
As long as this has already been included. I didn't know if it'd been included or not. Okay. We're good.
All right. That brings to general public comment.
Hi there.
We don't have to.
There's no amendments, right? Well, good morning. I'm here for two reasons this morning, but mainly I am here to remind you that the fairs, Jackson County Blue Ribbon Fair started last night, and then we're off to a great start. We have all the food booths, the church booths and that kind of thing are all full. We have 15 food trucks. The Midway is, of course, full and ready to go. We have 91 vendors and 19 schools in the Civic Center. And this year, they've mixed the school booths with vendors booths to get people to walk around some more and interact with the vendors and that kind of thing. And so the schools are real happy and the vendors are real happy, too, that they're seeing more activity at their booths. I wanted to remind you that today is the judge's luncheon at 11:30. Food will arrive around 11:00, so we hope to see you all there at 11:30. And there's a, I put on your desk, which I'm sure you've already seen, but the fair book along with the flyer that we have that highlights the different activities going on at the fair this year. One of the things we have is the Civic Center entertainment is Tuesday, of course, is Family Day. And so there's three dance studios that will be performing Tuesday night in the Civic Center. New this year is on Wednesday, the 4-H Modeling Squad will be doing a show at 6:30 on Wednesday night in the Civic Center. And Friday night, we have Don Smith and Elijah the Magician. So those are some cool things happening this year. Also, that since Tuesday is Family Night, we also have some outside entertainment that will be happening thanks to the Mississippi Songwriters Association. They've coordinated with us to bring some performers to play on the stage outside, so that will be new this year. We have Darwin Nelson and also the Big Reveal, which are actually, since it's Family Night, we wanted it to be youth-friendly. And the Big Reveal, they're actually youth performers. So that'll be neat this year. Then Friday night, we've got two bands, Carrie Lane and Ty Taylor. And then Saturday, Mike Myers and Brandon Green and Mason Holland also. So those are new this year, and so we're excited about having some outside entertainment to go along with the festivities that are happening at the fair this year.
Very good.
Does anybody have any questions about the fair?
Or need to apply.
So the parking permits that you have, you'll hang them, you know, put them in your dash or on your mirror. If you, when you come to the fair, if you will, is it Kenneth Major Road Avenue? It used to be Vega Street that goes by the Health Department, that road. If you follow that road down and where you see the Sheriff's Office Training Center, you'll pull in that gate right behind there. That pass will allow you to park in that parking lot right on the fair grounds. That's where security and the staff and that kind of thing park. So we hope to see everybody there. Midways, they've got a new, bigger roller coaster this year they're excited about, and everything looks really good. Okay. The second thing I'm here for is we had the, I serve on a committee with five other individuals that put on the Pascagoula Run Paddle Battle. It is a kayak race that starts at Little River Marina and ends at the La Pointe Krebs House each year. And the event was this past Saturday, October 19th, we had 90 paddlers register for the event, and they come from Georgia, Florida, Louisiana, of course, Mississippi, and Alabama. So we have representation from five states that come, they come in, they stay in our hotels, they stay at the campgrounds, they stay at, you know, they bring their RVs, and they participate, and they really do appreciate the event. The reason why I'm mentioning that is because Jackson County provides their support through Nika King in the Recreation Department with some of the logistics, and she's on the planning committee, she helps us advertise and do a lot of different things. And so if Nika will come up, and then, of course, for y'all, we have your sponsor plaque, which is our awards that we do for the participants all come, this cedar comes from the river. We have a couple of guys that go out and they find some down limbs, and they take them to a local cabinet shop, and they slice them into discs, and then Hay Goods burns the Pascagoula Run logo into the wood, and then they usually have like, you know, what, you know, so-and-so was first overall male, and they get up, you know, their little thing will be on there. But these are, this year, we did for the sponsors, and it has the Jackson County logo on it, and I wanted to present it to Nika for all of her support for the race, as well as the board of supervisors. Oh. It's a great event, and thank you for your support.
Yeah, and I do want to thank y'all for supporting Outdoor Recreations. It is a good thing, and all of the citizens that do attend all of my events enjoy it very much. Thank you, guys, for supporting Outdoor Recreations in Jackson County.
And the event does, is hosted by the La Pointe Krebs House, which I know is one of your partners, and held on, you know, it ends on the county property right there at the La Pointe Krebs House and museum. And so it is a fundraiser event for them, but also that, you know, they host the award ceremony and that kind of thing on the beautiful grounds, and everybody just really loves the race. So just wanted to say thank you for that.
Very good.
I think that's it. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Dorsey.
Thank you, Dorsey.
My name is Carl Webb. I come from Gulf Park Estates, and we wanted to make sure that the board was aware that on November the 9th, we're going to have a Veterans Day celebration. It could be about five hours. There's going to be music, there's going to be a cook-off to honor our veterans, so make sure you guys are welcome.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Public comment. To the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
To move.
We've got a motion by Mr. Morris. Second by Mr. Cumst. Any discussion? Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Board attorney?
There's just a couple of brief matters. This first one serves a process notice on Jackson County. I was talking with Joey and with Josh, and two things. We get served with process for lawsuits. We also get served with notices of claim under the Mississippi Torque Claims Act. I'm just trying to tighten things up a little bit. Sometimes, not all the time, but sometimes either a lawsuit or a notice will come in and won't be served on the proper person, and then we get into kind of a little bit of a quandary as to do we file a motion to dismiss a lawsuit, or do we treat a notice of claim as improper under the law because it wasn't served correctly on the right person. What I would like to do, and I've talked with Joey about this, I've talked to Josh, I would like to have a resolution passed by this board, maybe next meeting, saying that for lawsuits that are served on us, the rules say that they need to either be served on the president or the clerk. And I would like for the board as a whole to say, okay, if it has to be served on the president, it needs to be put in the president's hands. I don't want to ever give up a defense to a lawsuit or a claim. So the problem is that sometimes, not often, but sometimes it may be left, say Troy, your officer, whoever the president may be during that certain year. And then I say, okay, do we fight that process, or do we just let it go and start defending the case? So for a lawsuit, it says the president or the clerk, which would be Josh, but in talking with Joey, we could, in the resolution, say either Josh or Joey, Carol Whitfield, if it's over in the Court Department, or Jennifer Freeman, if it's over here in land records. For claims under the Mississippi Torque Claims Act, it has to be served on the chancery clerk. Now, if we, again, we can allow somebody else to accept process, but we need to designate that person. Again, it could be Joey or Carol or Jennifer, but it's just something that comes up from time to time, and I would like to tighten up our procedure so if we do have a defense for improper process, that we can assert that defense either in federal court or in state court, and we don't give anything up. But I think it would require this board to say, if process is served on this county, either through a notice of claim or a lawsuit, these are the people that are authorized to accept that process. And so, you know, I mean, the president now, Troy, I mean, I guess you don't want anybody chasing you down, a process server chasing you down, but you're only subject to being served for lawsuits, not for notices of claim. And Josh could be served with a lawsuit. But anyway, any questions about that or concerns? Again, that's not that big of an issue, but it's just one of the things that I've noticed that I would like to tighten up in the board attorney's office.
Yeah, if you're not good with it, it needs to be changed.
Yeah, I'm fine.
And I even have people that call me from time to time, Jimmy, will you accept process? And no, I can't just accept process. We need to go through.
I've met people at soccer fields and at the gym and everywhere when they were trying to serve, and I'm like, hey, this is where I am. Come on.
Yeah, because what happens sometimes is if it's dropped off, let's just say, in Joey's office, well, I gave it to so-and-so. Well, she said she could accept it. No, I didn't say I could accept it. And then we're kind of, okay, we're kind of stuck, and just creates an additional hardship on my office trying to, do we fight it or do we not? So.
Is this specific people or positions?
Specific people.
Okay.
Well, you know, that's a good question. Right now, it would be Jennifer, since she's, and Joey, since he's the chief, and Jennifer, since she's in charge of the office, or Carol, since she's in charge of the office on the, across the street. I guess we could use their title and their name, and if that ever changes, we could change the name of that person.
Should be updated at least once a year.
We could, yes.
Because of the president?
We could.
Okay.
But there may be times if process is not served correctly, the statute of limitations may run. And if the statute runs, we've got a great defense to say, look, you just dropped it off with so-and-so, she's not authorized to accept process on behalf of the county. Time runs, we win the case. You know, not trying to be hard about it, but just trying to make sure that people follow the law on who they're supposed to serve the process.
Yeah. Okay.
But I'll put something together in conjunction with Joey and Josh for the next meeting. The next thing that I had was the status of InViva. It's a litigation matter, but we can talk about it in open session. If y'all recall, InViva filed for bankruptcy. This board authorized us to hire Bob Byrd to represent the county. The bankruptcy's in Virginia. And I know very little about bankruptcy, but I can tell you this. In, they filed this year, but in February of this year, they did file their, they did pay their fee, their fee in lieu of for taxes. They paid us $640,000 in February or March, I believe. So they're good on the fee in lieu of agreement. That will be coming up again, I guess, next month. They were, they were behind on some other payments to the port. Once the port gets the payments, they give it pursuant to an agreement to Josh's office, and then we, in turn, pay the bonds that were, that were sold to build the facility. Last, a couple of weeks ago, Bo Etheridge sent an email saying that they had paid their back rent and their warfage, a total of about $600,000 there that they had paid. About that same time, I got an email from, by Byrd. He sent me a pleading in the Virginia Bankruptcy Court, and it looks like what they've done is they have, as part of their bankruptcy, they have reaffirmed the facility's use and operations agreement, the option and lease agreement, as well as the land lease. So it's kind of, what little I know about bankruptcy, if you file bankruptcy and you have a mortgage on your house, you can either reaffirm it and keep paying it, or you can let it go. They've chosen to reaffirm the agreements with the port and with the county. They have paid all that they owe, and I assume that when they come out of bankruptcy, I believe they will do well. But the agreements that we have with them, it looks like they're going to continue to pay so the county's not on the hook for any of the bond money.
That's good. That is good.
I would say just keep, get Bob to keep us informed on that because they, their stock dropped off the New York Stock Exchange last week. It dropped all the way down to 20 cents, and I think there's some rule, if it's below 50 cents and it's on the New York Stock Exchange for, and it's below 50 cents for a year, then they drop it. And they did. They dropped it, and there's no payment for people that own that stock prior to them dropping it off the stock exchange.
There were agreements, I just took a glance, there were agreements that they did not reaffirm. They're just going to let them go. I assume that they reaffirm those that are most valuable to them and give them the best chance to come out of bankruptcy and make a profit and be a successful business. But anyway, right now, we're all paid up. We're all paid up.
But they're still operating?
It's, I don't know the, they're still operating. I don't know the status of what's being shipped through the port. Brian, have you heard from Bo? I don't know.
I believe they're still operating.
I, Ken, I would assume so because they're paying, paying good money, and I would assume that the operations are continuing because they've got to make a profit.
Is their business limited to South Mississippi?
No. No. They're a huge company.
Okay.
Mostly along the eastern seaboard.
Okay.
And then Mobile and Pascagoula, I believe, they have operations.
So the operations here appear to be extremely good and probably profitable.
Well, I think they got in a situation where they thought Wood Pellets were going to a different place than they actually went. I think they entered into some contracts that were not favorable to them, or maybe their operations were more expensive than what they had thought. But they had some bad contracts, and I believe the bankruptcy was to try to get them out of some of those bad deals that they had and try to reorganize that. I think it's a viable business. I think it's a going business, and, you know, the Wood Pellets are needed, and I think it's a good business. But if you have bad contracts, then you just, it's a bad deal.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. So all is good right there.
Finance.
Good morning. The first item I have is to order approval in the claim socket.
To move. Got a motion by Mr. Cumst.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bossarge. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. The last item I have is a resolution authorizing the inter fund loans for fiscal year September 30 of 2025.
To move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Taylor. Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. The last item I have is a resolution authorizing the operating transfers for fiscal year September 30 of 2025.
To move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Taylor. Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. The last item I have is a resolution authorizing the operating transfers for fiscal year September 30 of 2025.
To move.
Motion, motion by Mr. Morris. I think.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Bossarge?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Gulf Coast Skate Park.
Good morning, y'all. This is Tyler Crowant. He has started an organization called the Gulf Coast Skate Parks Association, and he's just going to give us a presentation about what that organization has been doing and possibly give us some help with planning for a skate park in Jackson County. So go ahead.
First of all, thank y'all for giving me some time to speak to you today, and thank you, Matt, for introducing me and making sure that I got on the schedule for this. So I am Ty Crowant. I'm presenting today. So I'm the president of the Gulf Coast Skate Parks Association. I've been skateboarding for 22 years. I've been to 137 different skate parks across America, Europe, Africa. Former sponsored skateboarder from El Paso, Texas, started Shotgun Skateboarders, a skateboard company. I'm on YouTube. Your kids might have seen me. But I started up the Gulf Coast Skate Parks Association because we saw a need on the coast for these parks because people were skating, but they didn't have a safe place to do it. So our mission is to grow the skateboarding community and to build free public skate parks along the Gulf Coast. So we are a newly established 501(c)(3), and I'm going to go through our brief history because we just got established last year. And we're going to go through the skate park benefits, and then a little proposal for Jackson County about a potential project and get y'all thinking about what skateboarding could look like here in Jackson County. So all the images from, that you'll see in this presentation are from events that we've hosted. October last year, we saw this need, and I got together with my friends, and we started doing this fundraising and seeing who would be appropriate to join a board of directors to start a nonprofit. And during that time, our friends and family and people in the community gave us $5,000, and we used that to become a charity. And then June of 2024, we obtained our 501(c)(3) status. So since then, we've been able to, well, even before we were official, we've been hosting weekly meetups every Wednesday night underneath the I-110 Bridge in Biloxi. So we've had 44 weekly meetups with 30 on average skaters coming out, and that's all ages, families, all coming and enjoying the day. We've organized six major events with an average of 250 guests, and then we've taught 75 youth, blowing away our goals for the year. And then we've given away 60 helmets for free. We highlighted talent on the coast of the different skateboarders who existed here for a long time and haven't had their time in the sun. We brought them out and shown, shown the coast what the skaters look like here. We also built the Biloxi DIY Skate Park, and some of the ramps you see in some of these photos are ones that were either donated by the community, by members who already had some stuff, and we kind of gave them a focal point to bring their stuff together, or we fundraised and brought some stuff in, just like we did actually yesterday. I just got, we just got done with a little $2,000 project to renovate some of the things we already built and make it last a couple more years. And then, so we've raised in total for the project about $3,500 just for this project that we're working on in Biloxi. Now, skate parks have so many different benefits. So first of all, we've got to engage the youth, right? So we have to invest in our youth. Skateboarding is great because it helps build a little bit of resilience. We're going to talk about here our economic boost and how it can help bring a little bit more dollars into our towns here on the, on our coastal cities, and then how it helps grow the community. So when we engage our youth, we give them a dedicated space to explore and express themselves in a safe environment. It's going to do so much for them. They're going to be able to practice that resilience because in skateboarding, you fall about 1,000 times sometimes before you figure out how to do it properly. And then we want to have a safe place for them to do it. We don't want them to go do it at a place that's not designed for it, maybe rough grounds or in front of their house on a county road and something terrible happened, right? So we want to create that safe place for them to do it. It's awesome because it attracts diverse groups who might not otherwise mingle. Because skateboarding, it is for everybody, whether, you know, what doesn't matter, your age or race, or your sex, like just skateboarding just brings us all together. And it's a very inclusive environment as well. So everyone is welcome as long as you've got your skateboard with you. And then the economic impact, so it can attract visitors from outside this area. So for example, Pensacola just built a $2 million skate park about two years ago, and I know a lot of my friends that are from these coastal towns, they'll go there, or they'll go to New Orleans, or they'll go to Mobile where they have premium skate parks. We want that for our coastal cities here in Mississippi as well. So it retains those locals, too. You know, they're not going out and spending their money that they earned in the county and taking them out. And then visibility and image, it can help, you know, add to the culture and vibrancy that is the coastal lifestyle down here. And then lastly, that community growth, it's a focal point. The skate park is a place that people can come and share ideas and talk about what's happening in their lives, that inclusive culture again. But something interesting about these skate parks is it's used all year round, whereas some seasonal sports are just used for a fraction of that time. Skateboarding is constantly, you will see someone always out there using that park. Now, the proposal that I'm talking about is based off of this model that we created in our last year. So set a, the, first of all, we set a goal to create a professional park somewhere in the county, and then we can start, right? That's the big goal. We can start by doing a pop-up event and then weekly meetups, which is what we did. We did one pop-up event to see, okay, what is the interest, like who is out there in the county, who would also like to help and get involved in a project. And then we coordinate these weekly meetups where every week, we're just coming together, skating, checking in, but we can also share what's going on with, as we move forward. And then we can move towards a temporary DIY park build, so that do-it-yourself skate park like we built in Biloxi. We just built that with the community of skaters, all on our own, working with the city as well, though, because these projects tend to go one of two ways. Either it's the city, enough people go and do advocacy and bring it to the city, and, you know, it takes a long time, but it's done proper, or they go renegade and they do it on their own, and then they hope they don't get tore out. So we've kind of made a hybrid of the two where we let the community get involved up front, and they are doing a lot of the legwork to get the skate scene going and moving in the right direction, while the government works towards, you know, getting the project properly designed and all the affairs that need to be taken care of, done. We can also use, like we have this past year, use all the data that we gathered in that first year to go for So for example, Pensacola just built a two million dollar skate park about two years ago, and I know a lot of my friends that are from these coastal towns, so they'll go there, or they'll go to New Orleans, or they'll go to Mobile where they have premium skate parks. We want that for our coastal cities here in Mississippi as well. So it retains those locals too, you know, they're not going out and spending their money that they earned in the county and taking them out. And then visibility and image, it can help, you know, add to the culture and vibrancy that is the coastal lifestyle down here. And then lastly, that community growth, it's a, it's a focal point. The skate park is a place that people can come and share ideas and talk about what's happening in their lives, that inclusive culture again. But something interesting about these skate parks is it's used all year round. Whereas some seasonal sports are just used for a fraction of that time, skateboarding is constantly, you will see someone always out there using that park. Now, the, the proposal that I'm talking about is based off of this model that we created in our last year. So set a, the, first of all, we set a goal to create a professional park somewhere in the county. And then we can start, right? That's the big goal. We can start by doing a pop-up event and then weekly meetups, which is what we did. We did one pop-up event to see, okay, what is the interest, like who is out there in the county, who would also like to help and get involved in a project? Uh, and then we coordinate these weekly meetups where every week we're just coming together, skating, checking in, but we can also share what's going on with, as we move forward. And then we can move towards a temporary DIY park build, so that do-it-yourself skate park like we built in Biloxi, we just built that with the community of skaters all on our own, working with the city as well though, because these projects tend to go one of two ways. Either it's the city, there are enough people go and do advocacy and bring it to the city, and, you know, it takes a long time, but it's done proper, or they go renegade and they do it on their own, and then they hope they don't get tore out. So we've kind of made a hybrid of the two where we let the community get involved up front, and they are doing a lot of the legwork to get the, the skate scene going and moving in the right direction, while the, the government works towards, you know, getting the project properly designed and, and all the affairs that need to be taken care of, done. We can also use, like we had this past year, use all the data that we gathered in that first year to go for grants. So that weekly meetup, we can show like, hey, we have this many youth coming out, the contest, we have this many people coming out for our major events. We use all that data to help us steer and understand what the project should look like when it hits its end state. And it helps us going for grants like the Tony Hawk Foundation, which is now the Skate Park Projects Foundation, and several others that are like that. So what we can offer y'all, uh, so we provide that data about skateboarding because we're on the ground with the skaters every day, and we're trying to collect that input. We're also guiding the community and steering the culture. So if we see any negative elements, we are constantly trying to deter it, and then our skateboarders are gaining that culture up front. And then as we're the mentors, the old skaters are teaching the younger skaters, we're sharing the best parts about our community to them. And then we can provide to y'all or to anyone who's trying to do these projects, that subject matter expert, when it comes to design, what the skateboarders will actually appreciate, what'll keep, what'll be skill inclusive, because we're not trying to build, you know, parks for the professionals. We want to build parks for communities so people can grow. So it'd be skill level inclusive for beginners, intermediate, and then a little bit for advanced, right? Again, we can help with the grant data and applications, and then we can collect that community feedback. We can become a focal point for that and provide that backup to the county. So in conclusion, I just want to say thank y'all again for giving me the time to talk to y'all about skateboarding. I'm super passionate about it, I'm sure you can tell. If y'all have any more information, my contact is up here. I also have a business card if you'd like it, but it's my phone number. We also have a website where if anyone is interested in donating to our projects, we can also, in the future, incorporate a place where we can be a vector for some of the, any funds from the community. If they want to give us the money, we can set aside a special page on our, a special part of our page to be just for a Jackson County skate park. My email and everything else is on there, we're on social media, but thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, so we've just got, you know, a few, I've talked, Randy and Troy, you know, St. Andrews Park, and then the Lemoine Boulevard Soccer Fields has some available space in it that we've kind of had, you know, just planned out over the last few years for potential spots for them. And we hope to at least maybe get a design started on one soon. So we're kind of, Lemoine Boulevard Fields is kind of the most optimal spot in my mind for that. It's a very urbanized area, you know, kind of feel like you'd get a lot of kids just walking in from the neighborhoods around there that wouldn't even have to drive too far. And then if you did, you know, have, you know, skaters from Ocean Springs or other parts of the county, it's not that far if they did need to drive there. So kind of just want to get the planning process underway and then see maybe how it could fit into a construction budget over the next few years. So just wanted to kind of let y'all know that's kind of what we were planning for, just make sure everybody's okay with that before we, you know, engage anybody. So.
Do y'all have any questions?
What would be, we would own it, you would oper- operate it, or, or what?
No, it would, it would, it would need to function pretty much just like a county park where it would be, you know, in a county property, and the county would own it. But what Tyler was describing is before we got to that part, their organization could help out with some temporary, just wooden ramps in a parking lot somewhere. Lemoine has a lot of parking lot space at it. That might be a good place to, to just kind of get something started, but it's just a way to, you know, further build public support for it and, and engage the public about it and just, you know, gather up information about what type of park the community might, might want to.
And also, the, the benefit of us coming in and doing that is that it comes in online early for these skateboarders and these families, so they can get a little bit of a taste upfront of what a bigger professional park might be like quick. Because we can do that in like just a few weeks with a couple thousand dollars. Maybe even raise from internally, or if there's some money set aside that discretionary that we can use to buy some small stuff up front, and there's space available, we could just bring that online early.
I think we'd have to really look into the liability insurance part of it too, to see, you know, what liability we, the county would have in, in operating this.
And, and, and they could help with that too. That's something that we've already talked about. They have some insurance professionals that are in the organization that have done the same thing for the city of Biloxi, correct? They basically handed off their, you know, insurance documents, and they reviewed them to see if they did match up with what it would need to cover for a skate park facility. And it, I mean, to my knowledge, it's not that much different than just general, you know, an open park liability coverage anyways. As long as it's, you know, signage is up about safety and proper rules and conduct at the park, as long as that's, you know, up and visible and well-known, and as long as the park is maintained well. You know, obviously, if you got a big crack in the concrete and it's gonna, you know, hurt somebody, then that's, you know, a liability on itself. But that's something that we're already doing at our parks and boat launches and, you know, everywhere anyways, so. And, you know, another really good benefit to their organization that I like is the, you know, mentoring side of it, where you would have older skaters there to help try to guide the youth and to help, you know, detract and, and avoid and, and, you know, push back any kind of negative, you know, conduct that you, you would get there. So I think if you didn't have that and you did just try to stick it off somewhere far out in the county, you know, somewhere that's not very visible, then that's when you do have a good opportunity for a lot of negative things to happen there. But if it's, you know, up front and the community supports it, and you've got a group of skaters that are supporting it and wanting to see it survive, you know, and last a long time, I think we'll have a lot of, you know, community support to avoid any of those types of issues, including, you know, just frivolous liability claims, so.
Isn't it an Olympic sport now?
Yes, sir.
It is. I was gonna touch on that.
Actually, uh, so in two thousand twenty, it was in the Tokyo Olympics, and then again, two thousand twenty-four. So the, the medalist from America who's won now two Olympic medals in skateboarding, I met him, Jagreet, and I met him in New Orleans. Fantastic skater, skate, seen him, and he's, he's setting a, a really good example for kind of the role model. And I would love to see an Olympian, you know, from Mississippi make their way to the international stage. And in fact, part of our vision is a little bit of that, that are some of the talent that is cultivated here over the years can one day be seen, debuted over there. Because I think that Mississippi, you know, these southern states have these athletes in all kinds of different sports fields that get represented. I think they're, they're out there in skateboarding too. They just have, they don't have the skate parks to develop the talent yet. So maybe working together, we can make that a, a reality.
Yeah, I don't think liability would be much of a concern.
Does it change the liability if it's not built by us? Like if it's a DIY park, would that mean that we need to check to make sure it's safe, or?
Right. Well, I think if it, I think if it's, if it's our park, even if somebody else builds it, it's our park, I, I can think of a number of different defenses. Number one, you're never gonna have a jury, there's always gonna be tort claims, so it'd be just a judge. You put up a proper sign, skate at your own risk. Somebody like Randy goes out there and tries to skateboard and falls, I mean, it's assumption of the risk. I mean, Randy, didn't you see that, you know, you're getting on a tall thing? So you got assumption of the risk defense, you got immunity defenses. If it's maintained like any other park that we have, I think that just goes with running the county. We just maintain it okay and make sure there's no hidden hazards, and I think we'd be fine.
What you think, DJ?
I mean, recreation comes in all different shapes and forms. Inside and more research, this is, this is indeed, I think, you know, we can be, I think, I think it's quite a bit of what it is. Especially, especially on that side, you know, it is a good place to start. I like the pop-up events, we'll, you know, we'll start getting that, and then those pop-ups will tell us that.
On that, on the grassy side, opposite of where the, where the parks are already there on Lemoine? Is there a spot where we can pour some concrete, or what would we need to do?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the spot we had carved out for it. Yeah, you've got, if you're looking at the map, and towards that east side, there's, you know, nothing over there between the road and the little bayou stream that goes over there. Troy, you had asked, you know, if there was a spot for pickleball courts at Lemoine, because it was such a popular sport as well. That area, we think, could easily fit about eight pickleball courts, you know, along the road, and then a skate park facility, you know, a little bit further north on that same side, and have like a parking area that would separate the two uses. It's kind of what we had been batting around as far as an idea. All right, well, thank y'all so much for your time, and we'll just get back with you if we get further along with it, so.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Action items.
Couple of quick things on the state delegation side. Coastal Mississippi is doing a tour on the coast this week. They will be in Jackson County tomorrow. I believe they're meeting downtown Pascagoula for a walking tour around ten or ten-thirty AM, and then having lunch here, and then going to Walter Anderson Museum tomorrow afternoon. There'll be several tourism committee members from the legislature, which also serve on other committees, so it'll be a good time to, to, to do that if you are available for it. On the federal side, I just wanted to remind everyone of the flood insurance roundtable discussion that Congressman Ezeal's office is helping coordinate. That is in Hattiesburg on the thirty-first, all day in Hattiesburg, and we will have representatives speaking on the flood maps, on the flood insurance risk grading two point oh, and also the substantial improvement rule. So there, there'll be a lot of discussion on that. If you need more information on that, I'd be glad to send it to you by email.
Will you email me?
Sure.
I'm gonna try to go to that.
Okay.
Yep.
You're gonna be at the chamber's office, ain't it? That's what we're gonna do.
Yes, lunch tomorrow is at the chamber. Yep. What insurance issue on Halloween is a pretty good day to do it on? That's what it is.
It can be a trick or treat, yeah.
That's all I have.
Vice items, Mr. Cumbus?
I didn't have any.
Mr. Morris?
I didn't have anything.
Mr. Taylor?
No, sir.
All right, I just had one resolution accepting the resignation of Mr. Shepherd from Jackson County Airport Authority. So I'll make that motion. Mr. Bossarge? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And we still need to, to work on finding someone to fill that position.
Right. We're working on.
All right. Mr. Bossarge, do you have? All right, we've got what, two, two items?
Three.
Three. Three, yeah, three.
The, the one I have is an update on Jackson County versus George County pending litigation. And I think Mr. Cumbus was on the sheriff, the personnel, that was the same personnel matter we've discussed the last couple of meetings.
Okay.
All right, so do we have a motion to go into closed determination, see if there's sufficient evidence for an executive session?
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Taylor.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.